States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Dolgren.
Here.
Commissioner Alves absent, Commissioner Dematte.
Here.
Commissioner Beckler.
Here.
Commissioner Runtine.
Here.
Commissioner Watts absent, and Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
I'd like to note for the record that Commissioner Dolgren is participating in today's meeting remotely via Zoom. Commissioner Dolgren, can you indicate if you are alone in the meeting location or there is anyone else in attendance with you? Can you hear me? You're muted.
Yeah, now I can. I couldn't a minute ago. I was just texting Kelsey telling her I couldn't hear you. Now I can.
Okay, I'll reread this statement. Can you indicate if you are alone in the meeting location or if there is anyone else in attendance with you?
I am alone with my dog.
Okay, I think that accounts for being alone. Okay. Welcome everyone to today's Planning Commission hearing. The meeting is open to virtual and in-person participation and may be observed online through the Placer County website. If you would like to make a public comment on any item today, the Planning Commission clerk will announce when you are to line up and provide testimony. If you are calling in at an appropriate time, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not on the published agenda or hearing items. Each commenter will be entitled to three minutes of comment. Thank you for your consideration as we work to ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. Please also be advised that today's hearing is being recorded and will be available on the Planning Commission's website following the hearing. I'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a report from the Planning Director. Thank you, Chris. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Dematte, Commissioners, Chris Pahouli, Planning Director. I'd like to start by noting that earlier this week, the Board of Supervisors took up the Well Quest Senior cottages project in Granite Bay. The Board took tentative action to approve the entitlement package, which as the Planning Commissioners may recall, includes a general plan amendment and continued the item to November 19th. The reason for continuing the item, as I mentioned, it includes a general plan amendment. We have two additional general plan amendment opportunities before the end of this calendar year. And we're looking to package them together with a number of items that we have that we're currently working on that also are general plan amendments. So again, that item was a tentative action taken to approve the entitlement package and continue to November 19th. I'd also like to note that upcoming to the Board of Supervisors is the General Plans Community Engagement Program. Staff is scheduled to have the item considered by the Board of Supervisors at their November 5th meeting. As far as upcoming meetings to the Planning Commission, at your next meeting on October 24th, you are scheduled to hear the ranch subdivision in the Dry Creek community. As I've mentioned before, we are expecting that that will that meeting will generate quite a bit of public interest and public comment. So I would expect that we will spend quite a bit of time considering that item. So please plan ahead. That will be the only item on the 24th meeting agenda. Then upcoming from there, we do have a November 14th Planning Commission meeting. We have four items that are tentatively scheduled for that hearing, including a Placer County Government Center Amendment, Beautiful Minds Wellness Center in North Auburn, an appeal of an additional building site in North Auburn, and then a DA amendment for Bickford. So four items that are again tentatively scheduled at this time for that November 14th meeting. At past Planning Commission meetings, I've mentioned, and I know the clerk of the board has reached out to you about a potential November 21st meeting date, we will not be holding a November 21st meeting date. So I wanted to inform you of that and then indicate that there is a December 12th meeting that's on your, that's going to be, going to be held. The last two items that I wanted to mention to you are both related to housing. The first is the Housing Element Amendment, which I've mentioned in the past. We continue to work with HCD to put together a revised Housing Element Amendment package that we can bring before the Board of Supervisors. We are looking to schedule that before the end of the year with the Board. And then lastly, I did want to mention to you that the RFP that is going to solicit consulting services to assist the county with evaluating the affordable housing ordinance. That RFP was posted just yesterday. I'll be sending out or I'll be working with the clerk of the board to send out that RFP to all of the Planning Commissioners based on interests provided in the past. The closing date for that RFP is November 1st. And that concludes my update. I'm happy to answer questions.
Any question?
Chris, I have a question for Chris. The town hall that was scheduled for Tuesday, coming up Tuesday, is it still going on and what's the agenda for that?
So there is a town hall meeting scheduled for Tuesday, 6:00 PM in this, in these chambers. The purpose of that meeting is to solicit input on the zoning text amendment package that the Planning Commission heard at, I believe, your last meeting, or perhaps was the meeting before that. So it's that package of amendments. Kelly Kellinger Cecil, supervising planner, will be reviewing those proposed amendments and answering questions from the public during that town hall meeting. The recording from the town hall meeting will be uploaded after it's done to our website. And we're also going to be attending at least a couple of MAC meetings. Haven't yet set the schedule for all of those.
Would you be able to have Kelly send us the presentation for the town hall, just so we have a copy of it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So that's going to be on Tuesday, the 15th, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It's 6:00 PM here. Okay. Anybody else have questions? Okay, thank you, Chris. I will now open public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to provide comments. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Please step forward.
Yes, it's me. Good morning. I'm Laura Bullard, and again, I own two homes or whatever in Placer County, one in the Dry Creek area and the other one out in the Sheridan area. And I have no pictures or anything for you guys this time or whatever. Hopefully you guys paid attention to the pictures that I gave you last time where we had the people's property where there's like a over 10-foot wall of dirt. Okay, so I want you to envision 10 feet or whatever up there, so up to that line or whatever. And on top of that, it's going to be placed houses. And the deal is that, and there's an elderly couple that lives right next door to it, and it's a problem. It's a problem that this is allowed in the county, and it's happening in several areas in the Dry Creek area. And I want you to envision your own property. Okay, I don't know where you all live. I know where some of you live. I could probably find where some of you live. But envision your own property, okay? And then suddenly there appears this 10-foot wall of dirt. And it's only 18 inches, 18 inches inside of your property. And then on top of that, there now is going to be houses on top of that, okay? And the only reason that's given is that, so the developer on that property doesn't have to pay the additional cost that it would cost to have a pump to do the sewage in the development. Hmm, interesting. So the developer is being protected, but who is protecting the surrounding landowners? Is it planning? I met with two really nice gentlemen or whatever from the Planning Department, and I asked them, do they ever consider the impact on this property over here? And the answer became back, no. They said, we wait until this one makes a proposal and see whether their proposal meets with the new one. There seems to be something backwards in that. We currently have community plans. Okay, and if I read this community plan, it says that the new one's supposed to meet with the old one, not vice versa. There's a problem there. You, so I'm saying, who's protecting the landowners? So the deal is, I said, yeah, maybe it's the Planning Commission. Your job is to make recommendations to and make decisions on major land developments. And making, you know, references to the Board of Supervisors. We have community plans, and those community plans, again, it should be the new one not interfering with the old one, okay? We need to ask, not just whether it's legal under county standards, but does it fit with the surrounding topography and the parcels around them? Does it fit with the community plans? This particular one had to go through reapplication in 2022, even though it had originally been proposed in 2005, but 2022, which means that some of you were sitting on this when that happened. Ask yourselves in the future, is it meeting the needs in the surrounding communities?
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? Seeing none, go to online, anybody?
Diane, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings, Commissioners. This is Diane Luiz Alessi from Christian Valley Park Community Services District as Director. We just recently had an issue here in the district, and I just want to really bring this to your attention. When they're putting or removing the dirt from the project for the roundabout at the Lone Star location, the Florence location, they routed trucks into Christian Valley to a private landowner. And I don't know how that gets permitted. Maybe I can, you can direct staff to answer. But they literally took a route that was partially district road and then went into private road. And it was 504 loads in one week to a private property owner who basically is filling in down to the ravine on a private road. So I don't know how the county's doing these contracts with or subcontracts for dirt removal, but apparently the gentleman's contractor hooked up with the county or Caltrans or whoever's got the contract to route these huge, and they're not small dump trucks. They're like 30-yard trucks maxed out, damaging roads. So I would like to know what our special district has to do to mitigate this kind of abuse? If you're going to continue to do these projects out on 49 and try to route it to private properties in Christian Valley. So that is our concern. It kind of consumed our Board on our meeting Tuesday, and we're looking into it. But I would, any staff there that can offer any guidance on how you're doing these sideways contracts to get these projects done? And who's being abused by it? It's kind of in line with Laura's comment. Anyways, I'm going to yield on that, and I would appreciate an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I will close public comment on items on the agenda. Next on the agenda.
Sure. Am I able to ask a question to staff without, about the two public comments?
I'll refer to Clayton on that, but I don't.
Or can I not?
So Amber wants to ask a question for somebody who had something not on the agenda. She wants to reply to somebody who was asked a public comment.
Chris and Clayton a question about the two public comments.
I also have a, I also have a question about one of the public comments if we have time to do that.
We have time, go ahead. Yes, you certainly can ask questions.
Okay, so Clayton and Chris, I know it would be helpful for me, at least as a Commissioner, to understand the project reference in the Dry Creek area. Is that a current project, the one that has the berm? Maybe have a better understanding of what that project is and, you know, are they permitted to build up the berm next to the neighboring properties line? And then on the Dry Creek project, it would be helpful for me to understand if the, it sounds like the property that is taking the dirt from the roads, are they permitted to fill dirt down to the ravine? Because I know that there's like a cubic yard requirement that you need to be permitted for, for moving dirt. So it would be helpful for me to understand if those two situations are permitted.
Yeah, so my understanding is the first, or is the project that Ms. Bullard was mentioning was the Creekview Ranch project. And the grading that's occurring is part of the Creekview Ranch project that is, has been approved and has an approved grading, grading permit. So. Oh, it's Brady. Okay, I'm sorry. So it's Brady, and Brady is approved as well.
Okay.
So just for purposes of kind of round act compliance, we're allowed to have a brief discussion of it, but since it wasn't agendized, we can't have a full discussion. Certainly, staff can follow up with you on the questions, and if there is a desire, we can agendize items for a later commission meeting. But, and we certainly accept the, certainly yeah, are interested in your questions and will respond to those, but it just, it needs to be through either of those formats. We can't really have an extensive discussion here.
For me, yeah, thank you.
My question is about Ms. Bullard's comment and where the decision for the grading is made. Because I know we approved the project. I understand that part of it. But I do not believe when we approve the project, the grading came to us as an issue to discuss. So is that, is that decision made at the staff level?
It is. It's approved, grading plans are reviewed and approved by our Engineering and Surveying Division.
So it didn't come to us.
County departments.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's it because we can't have legal discussions on this. So just questions that could be answered later. So I'm closing public comment. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the first hearing item, which is a request to recommend an appointment of a Planning Commissioner to the Board for a vacant seat on the wastewater advisory committee. We have Laura Rath from Environmental Health, who will discuss the committee and expectations for serving. But first, Chris Pahouli will provide a little context on why this item is coming before us. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioners. I did want to provide just a little bit of background on this item before Ms. Rath provides a brief presentation. So a few meetings ago, Commissioner Dolgren asked for a presentation related to public sewer connection requirements. And in subsequent Planning Commission meetings, I mentioned that I was working with public health staff to provide a presentation on the local area management plan or lamp. Public health staff indicated that they were going to be undertaking a process to update the lamp, particularly focusing on the public sewer connection requirements. They further indicated that there was a wastewater advisory committee that would be convened, hadn't been convened in a number or in a while, and that there was a vacancy on the wastewater advisory committee that could be filled by a Planning Commissioner or a Board member upon, upon appointment by the Board. So therefore, for today's item, we do have public health here to provide a brief overview of the lamp and the wastewater advisory committee. And the ask before you will be to potentially recommend appointment of one of the members of your own ranks to be then considered by the Board of Supervisors. So with that introduction, I'd like to introduce.
Wait, Chris, Chris.
Yes.
Chris, I have one question. What's the status of the policy that you all were working on regarding hookups for rural properties?
Yeah, so I think Ms. Rath can answer that.
Okay.
But they are working on making some, some changes. And then I should also note that once that work is done on the lamp, that we would expect a more detailed presentation in front of the Planning Commission. So sometime, perhaps maybe early next year, somewhere around that timeframe. Thanks.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. My name is Laura Rath. I'm the supervisor for the Land Use and Water Resources section of Environmental Health. Our section oversees the onsite sewage disposal program within the county jurisdictions, as well as local jurisdictions, including the city of Auburn, Colfax, Rockland, and the town of Loomis. As Mr. Pahouli indicated, I'm here today to give you a brief overview of our local agency management plan, also called the lamp, and our, and the role of our wastewater advisory committee, which we call the WAC. So the proper citing and permitting of onsite sewage disposal systems in California is based on state code. The code went into effect in 2013. Us in the regulating community, community. Us in the regulating community, uh, community call it the OTS policy. It has a super log name, which is the Water Quality Control Policy for the citing, design, operation, and maintenance of onsite wastewater treatment systems. So OTS is a lot simpler to say. So counties throughout the state have two options for implementing the state codes, for implementing these requirements. The first option is what they call Tier One, it's a general state code. It's very restrictive and it requires larger lots in order to make a parcel buildable. The other option is Tier Two, which is a county-specific program. This is our lamp. It takes into account local conditions and allows the development of smaller lots in a manner that's still protective of public health. Placer County chose Tier Two, and with the approval of the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Board of Supervisors, our lamp was approved in 2017. The approved lamp resulted in only minor changes from the code that we already had in place. We had a robust program that already had taken into account the site conditions that we find in Placer County and alternative technologies available to us. As part of lamp approval, counties are required to provide reports to the regional board. We do an annual report each year and then a five-year report also. Our five-year report was submitted in 2023 and there were no areas of concern. Within those reports, we provide information regarding septic permits that were issued in that timeframe, water quality data and information related to any sewage-related complaints we might have received, and variances. Any future updates that are proposed to the lamp would require Regional Water Quality Control Board approval and Board of Supervisors approval. The Placer County Wastewater Advisory Committee, also known as the WAC, was established in 2000 to serve as an advisory role to environmental health for the development and implementation of the onsite program. The 13-seat committee approved by the Board of Supervisors has members that represent septic stall installers, septic pumpers, consultants, the building industry, academia, environmental consultants, and other relevant groups. The committee makes recommendations to the Environmental Health Director regarding ordinance, revisions, and updates and other program improvements. The WAC provided valuable input and a letter of recommendation in 2017 when we took that lamp to the Board of Supervisors for approval. We're looking at, Environmental Health is looking at potentially making a few updates to the lamp, so the WAC committee would provide valuable input when these updates are proposed, so whether we can ensure community partners are involved. So I'm happy to answer any questions about those two things, if you have any.
Thank you Laura, does anybody have questions? No, no questions, okay, then there's no questions for staff? Then I will open it up to public comment on this item. Is there anybody in the room? Seeing none, anybody online?
George, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. George, are you able to unmute your mic?
There we go, yeah, sorry about that, it finally popped up to give me the option. Yeah, assume you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, first off, good morning Commissioners, George, I have a question from District Two. My apologies for not being able to participate as a Commissioner today. For this item on the agenda, I just wanted to let you know that I would like to be considered for the planning commission or appointment to the wastewater advisory committee. In addition to that, now that after Chris's report comments, it reminded me about Commissioner Dahlgren's interest in, interest in that topic also. While I'm interested in the opportunity, I would defer to Commissioner Dahlgren's interest in that appointment. So with that, appreciate your time and commitment, have a good day.
Thank you, George. Anybody else?
I see none.
I am going to close public comment on this item. I will bring it back to Commissioners to nominate a member.
I nominate George Alvez.
We have a nomination, do I need a first or a second? We have a second from Commissioner. Uh, roll call please.
Dahlgren.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Runtin?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Demeté?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Congratulations George, you've been nominated to go to the board. Yeah, careful what you ask for. Okay, moving on, the next hearing on the item is a request to consider the entitlements for the Loomis Basin Equine Medical Center expansion project. This item will be presented by supervising planning Anne Marie Novotny. Thank you, Amber.
Well, good morning Commissioners, I am Anne Marie Novotny, Supervising Planner, Community Development Resource Agency. And the purpose of today's public hearing is for the planning commission to consider the Loomis Basin Equine Medical Center expansion project and make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to take action on the following entitlements: rezone, minor use permit modification, design review, and a variance. The proposed project is located on the west side of Penrin Road, south of Penrin Estates Drive and east of Interstate 80 in the unincorporated Penrin area. The subject property is three adjacent parcels consisting of roughly 27.5 acres. Parcel A, assessor's parcel number 032244071, is located at 2973 Penrin Road. Parcel B, APN 043060065, is at 3001 Penrin Road. And Parcel C, APN 043060054, is at 3025 Penrin Road. The project site is located within Horseshoe Bar Penrin Community Plan area. Parcel A is designated rural estate 4.6 to 20 acre minimum. And Parcells B and C are designated Penrin Parkway. Parcel A is zoned residential-agricultural, combining minimum parcel size of 4.6 acres. And Parcells B and C are zoned neighborhood-commercial, combining design-scene corridor. Now a little bit of background on this project, going back to 2011. In November of that year, the zoning administrator approved a minor use permit, which is attachment I to the staff report, and adopted a mitigated negative declaration to construct and operate the Loomis Basin Equine Medical Center on approximately 2.4 acres of APN 032244071, which we're referring to as Parcel A. The project included an about an 8,500 square foot veterinary facility with an equine hospital, an ICU unit, horse barn, administrative area, and parking. Then in December of 2015, the planning manager made a determination that additional accessory uses, a covered arena, foley barn, and hay barn, were in conformance with the existing minor use permit that was issued in November of 2011. Then in October 2017, the zoning administrator approved a minor use permit modification, which is attachment J to the staff report, to allow for expansion of the existing facility to add new office and veterinary exam space, horse stalls, covered area, and additional parking. Since 2017, the applicant and property owner has expanded accessory uses and added structures and improvements on both Parcells A and B, requested to be approved by this minor use permit modification, PLN 20-00188, which is attachment F to the staff report. Okay, so this is site plan for Parcel A, which is attachment H in the staff report, it's sheet MP-A. Existing facilities on Parcel A include the Loomis Basin Equine Medical Center, pastures, corrals, an arena, and parking. Improvements on Partial A, Parcel A, under the minor use permit modification include a temporary manure storage structure, paddocks, and additional parking. This is the site plan for Parcel B, which is also part of attachment H, it's sheet MP-B. Existing facilities in Partial B include two barns, an arena, pastures, and parking. Improvements on Parcel B, under the minor use permit modification, include a 20-stall barn, additional hay storage, additional covered paddocks, and parking, equestrian boarding and training facilities, street frontage improvements, and an equine large animal crematory. The crematory was issued a permit to operate from the Placer County Air Pollution Control District. Prior to permitting, the district ensures air-toxic emissions are below the risk threshold. The district has not received any public complaints, including odor or smoke, on the operating crematory. Site plan, Parcel C, which is sheet MP-C and attachment H. Existing facilities on Parcel C include pastures, corrals, a round pen, and a residence with a garage and parking for employees. Improvements on Parcel C, under the minor use permit modification, include a new 7,570 square foot building that would be occupied by a small pet hospital, imaging facilities, offices, and retail space, parking, internal roads, including a roundabout and pathways for horse and vehicle trailer movement, and frontage improvements, including landscaping, new driveway connecting Parcel B with Penrin Road, and improvements of Penrin Road consistent with Penrin Parkway development policies and standards in the Horseshoe Bar Penrin Community Plan. Now we're going to talk about the entitlements that are being presented here. First is the rezone. Parcells B and C are currently zoned neighborhood-commercial, combining design-scene corridor, which does not allow for equestrian facilities. To construct and operate equestrian land uses proposed with this project, a rezone of these parcels is required to add the combining agriculture zone district. And the purpose and intent of the combining ag zone district is to identify areas where parcel sizes and neighborhood conditions are suitable for raising and keeping of a variety of farm animals without compatibility problems with surrounding land uses. The rezone will result in these parcels being zoned neighborhood-commercial, combining agricultural, combining design-scene corridor. Addition of the combining ag zone district is consistent with objectives, policies, general land uses, and programs in the Placer County General Plan, Horseshoe Bar Penrin Community Plan, and state law, and supports and enhances the general health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the county, since agricultural uses are encouraged by the county. The proposed rezon supports General Plan Policies 7A1, which states the county shall protect agriculturally-designated areas from conversion to non-agricultural uses. Policy 7A2, which states the county shall ensure that unincorporated areas within city spheres of influence that are designated for agricultural uses are maintained in large parcel sizes of 10 acre minimums or larger. And Policy 7A3 states the county shall encourage continued, and where possible, increased agricultural activities on lands suited to agricultural uses. The proposed rezone is also consistent with the Horseshoe Bar Penrin Community Plan and supports Land Use Policy 3K, which states maintenance of livestock and accessory structures for livestock, particularly horses, is an important component of the rural character of the community. And Land Use Goal 2B states uses of land in the planned area should generally be restricted to agricultural pursuits and such commercial uses as are necessary to serve the needs of the community, as well as provide for reasonable or accustomed services to local residents. The proposed rezone will serve the public necessity, convenience, and welfare because it will maintain internal consistency with the policies and implementation programs for the Placer County General Plan relating to agricultural uses, including agricultural accessory structures, animal raising and keeping, and equestrian facilities. Conditions of approval have been imposed to ensure compatibility with surrounding land uses and consistency with onsite and surrounding zoning designations. Now we're going to talk about the minor use permit portion of the entitlements request. So medical services, including veterinary clinics and hospitals, equestrian facilities, and temporary vents are permitted on parcel-zoned residential-agricultural subject to issuance of a minor use permit. Temporary vents and medical services, including veterinary clinics and hospitals, are permitted on parcel-zoned neighborhood-commercial, also subject to issuance of a minor use permit. And equestrian facilities are permitted on land with a combining agriculture zone district as proposed on Parcells B and C. Improvements associated with the proposed project would generate an increase in traffic volume along Penrin Road. However, the transportation impact study determined the traffic volume increase would be nominal and the existing circulation system would adequately accommodate the vehicle volume generated by the project. Overall, the project, project is estimated to generate 31 additional trips during the AM peak hour and 39 additional trips during the PM peak hour. All roadway segments and studied intersections as analyzed in the transportation impact study were determined to continue to operate acceptably at level of service D or better during the AM and PM peak hours under existing plus project conditions. The project is, the minor use permit modification allows up to six onsite events annually with a maximum of 350 patrons per event. And the events would occur on weekends between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Since 2011, temporary outdoor event permits have been approved for a maximum of 500 patrons per event. Traffic volume generated by these events are considered as a baseline condition. The six annual events requested would allow up to 350 patrons as compared to 500 at each event, resulting in a vehicle volume reduction compared to the baseline conditions. And the conditions of approval 72 and 73 would be implemented to ensure queuing and parking on Penrin Road does not occur during events and requires a parking plan submitted to the county 60 days prior to the event dates. These conditions will also ensure that the project does not generate a volume of traffic beyond the design capacity of all roads providing access to the site and nearby intersections. Now we're coming to the design review portion, which pertains to the new 7,570 square foot veterinary building that's proposed for construction on Parcel C, which is subject to approval of a design site review agreement. The agreement, which is attachment E to the staff report, includes a site review of the plans submitted for construction of the proposed new Penrin Pet Hospital. The plan, plans include architectural design, floor plan and elevations, and preliminary landscape and civil plans. The site review portion of the agreement specifies conditions for building arrangement and setbacks in conformance with site development standards for the neighborhood commercial zone district as set forth in Placer County Code Section 1730010, and requirements for building exterior appearance, signs, parking, and traffic circulation, landscaping, walls, fences, trash enclosures, and light, lighting. The applicant has reviewed the design site review agreement and accepts the terms and conditions of the agreement. It also includes a preliminary landscape plan, the proposed construction of the new small animal veterinary hospital. On Parcel C includes a landscape plan with street frontage plantings of accent trees, drought-tolerant native shrubs, and flowering ground covers. And the perimeter of the project site includes screen plantings of native drought-tolerant trees, shrubs, and ground covers, and vegetative swale plantings. Now we're coming to the variance request. So the proposed project includes a request for approval of a side setback variance to allow four existing outdoor covered paddocks located on Parcel A to remain at a setback of 1.5 feet from the south property line, where 30 feet is normally required. I've got some photos up here, you can see, so the four unpermitted paddocks were actually placed in this location because they are, there was an open area adjacent to the other permitted paddocks. There are also some topography issues, as you can see, there's a steep slope with some rock outcroppings and trees, which is adjacent to the last paddock, that constrains locating the paddocks further north of the south property line. And to the south of the paddocks on Parcel B, which you can see there, is an existing gravel driveway that provides access to various facilities located on Parcel B, including existing non-res, an existing non-residential structure, which is used as an office and attack room, again, constraining being able to locate the paddocks on Parcel B. And there's also additional site photos included in attachment K. And I just want to make note that this, this line between Parcel A and B, again, this is all part of the project. So it's an interior. part of the project, so it's an interior portion of the project that is where the boundary line is. So, in order, Placer County Code Section 1760100 has specific findings that must be made when granting a variance. The criteria are also set forth in California Government Code Section 65906, and there are six different criteria that must be met. A, there are special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, and because of such circumstances, strict application of zoning ordinance Chapter 1706060 would deprive the subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under similar zone classifications. So, in this case, the slope of the property and the location of the existing driveway and the existing paddocks make the current location of the four unpermitted paddocks the best location for them on the property. B, the granting of variance will not constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and in the same zone district, and as paddocks are allowed on residential agricultural zone properties. C, the variance does not authorize a use that is not otherwise allowed in the residential agricultural combining minimum parcel size of 4.6 acre zone district, which is what is the zoning for Parcel A. D, the grant of the variance does not, under the circumstances and conditions applied in this particular case, adversely affect public health or safety, is not materially detrimental to the public welfare, nor injurious to nearby property or improvements. E, the variance is consistent with the Placer County General Plan and Horseshoe Bar Penrin Community Plan. And F, the variance is a minimal departure from the applicable requirements of Section So, staff has concluded there are special circumstances, including topography constraints, the buildout of Parcel B, and the location of the other paddocks adjacent to the four unpermitted paddocks. Because of these circumstances, a strict application of the zoning ordinance has been found to deprive the subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under similar zone classifications. There is nothing associated with the design or scale of the proposed reduced setbacks and location of the existing unpermitted paddocks to indicate that granting of the variance would be inconsistent with the purposes of County Code Section 1756020D, which allows paddocks within which animals, such as horses, are kept. And in addition, the paddocks are not located near an existing residence, also consistent with Section 1756020D1A. The zoning ordinance acknowledges variances as a means to mitigate when there is a peculiar condition that prevents the property from being developed consistent with similar properties. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about the community outreach that has been done over the course of several years with this project. So, the proposed project was presented to the Horseshoe Bar Penrin Municipal Advisory Council as an information item on May 23, 2023, and as an action item on November 28, 2023. The project was well received and supported by both the public and MAC members. Public comments received during the meetings praised the project, its location, and proposed improvements that will help better serve the equine and large animal community of the county, and the MAC unanimously voted to recommend approval of the project. The notice of intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration was released and distributed for a 30-day public review period on January 24, 2024. Comment letters were received from three agencies, PG&E, Caltrans, and the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, and two members of the public, and copies of the comments received are Attachment C, Exhibit D to the staff report, and are summarized in the staff report. And then for, oops. For this Planning Commission hearing, public notices were mailed to property owners of record within 300 feet of the proposed project site to provide notice to minimum 30 properties. Posters and copies of the legal notice were posted at conspicuous places on or adjacent to the subject property. A public hearing notice was published in the Sacramento Bee. Other appropriate agencies, public interest groups, and citizens were sent copies of the public hearing notice, including the Horseshoe Bar Penrin Municipal Advisory Council. And we've only received two written public comments that were received prior to the hearing today. One is from a neighbor expressing concerns about the crematorium, the proposed events, and the variance request. The other letter was from the South Placer Municipal Utility District, informing that the adjacent Penrin Townhomes Development is currently installing a sewer main in Penrin Road approximately 225 feet from Parcel B, and it provided requirements for connecting to public sewer if the applicant is interested. So, at the time that the environmental review was done and the project came forward, this was not an option, so they are currently on septic, and so that would be something that they could look into in the future if they desired to connect with the sewer. So, now, we're at the point where this is what staff is bringing forward to the Planning Commission. This is our recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the following action items to the Board of Supervisors, and there are five specific actions. So, one is to adopt a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and related mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for the proposed project based on the findings contained in the resolution. Two, adopt an ordinance rezoning APNs 043060054 and 043060065 from C1-DC to C1-AAG-DC to allow for equestrian uses to be developed and operated on both parcels based on the findings contained in the ordinance. Three, approve Minor Use Permit Modification PLN 20-00188 to expand the Loomis Basin Equine Medical Center by adding a 7,570 square foot small pet hospital, which includes an imaging facility, offices, and retail space, permits existing barns, covered paddocks, large animal crematory, and equestrian boarding and training facilities, allows for additional parking, internal circulation, and frontage improvements, and up to six events annually with event patron limit of 350, subject to the conditions of approval and supported by the findings contained in the staff report. Four, approve a Design Site Review Agreement, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. And five, approve a variance to allow four existing outdoor covered paddocks located on APN 032244071 to remain at a setback of 1.5 feet from the south property line where 30 feet is normally required, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. So, this concludes my presentation on this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Any questions?
I have questions. Let me see, looking at the maps, and maybe you can clear this up for me real quick. It appears now Parcel A has a 30-foot area around it for, for non-construction stuff. That's why we're looking at a variance. Now, Parcel B and C look like they don't have that 30-foot going around it. Is that correct?
I'm not, is this for the variance portion, or?
Well, no, just, yeah, just the setback, the 30-foot setback in Parcel A. And B and C don't appear to have a 30-foot setback.
They do have setbacks, but that's not where the paddocks are being, are located right now, so they're...
Well, I'm just wondering about the difference here.
I think all three have a 30-foot setback. This is the only parcel that has unpermitted paddocks within the 30.
Well, looking at the maps and the setbacks in the map, it doesn't appear that way.
Yeah.
But anyway, and then the new construction, the new building in Parcel C looks like it would be within the 30-foot setback. It has it. Is that correct?
No, I'm sorry, not yet. We'll ask, when the applicant comes up, we can ask questions then. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not bringing up a problem. I just want clarification on the setbacks. Do all the parcels have a 30-foot setback?
All the parcels are subject to the setbacks based on their particular requirements, but the other parcels are not proposing anything that would be in those setbacks. This was the only one where we had a couple, well, four unpermitted paddocks that are already adjacent to the existing ones that weren't permitted. So, that's the only one that's...
Well, I'd say, look at the map.
Commissioner Johnson, if I, if I may, just to point out something that Anne Marie presented earlier, the parcels all do, or the three parcels are zoned differently, and so the two parcels are zoned commercial, and they have a reduced setback requirement, and that's why, that's why it's not tripping up that 30-foot setback requirement. They're a reduced setback, I believe it may be 10 feet, but it's a reduced setback for commercial properties.
Okay, well, that, yeah, that answers my question right there. I was looking at the maps, and I just noticed that...
Yeah, and Parcel A is the only one that's currently zoned RA, so that's why it's got the 30-foot setback. And then keep in mind that it's right adjacent to the interior. Parcel B is kind of like the middle parcel, so it's, and it's all owned by the same property, and they're all using the same thing. It's kind of almost arbitrary, you know, because they could at some point, if they wanted to merge those parcels together, or, you know, it's all part of the same parcel. They're not like adjacent to a neighbor that has a house or anything like that.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking, but I just wanted clarification because I noticed in Parcel C, it looks like the building, if it was the 30-foot setback, it's being built within a setback. And so, it's not, because it's commercial.
Yeah, it's commercial.
Yeah.
Well, the 1.5 feet are landlocked, and it's the same owner on either side of the...
Yeah, and I walked the property with, with the property owner, and it's, I mean, I did as best I could with the photos. There's more photos in the attachment, but it's, it's like, it's right next to a, it's right up against the other paddocks. There's like some topography issues there. You saw the one part where there's the rock that you can't move any farther, and there's already a dirt path, kind of, it's already a natural divider between A and B with the, with the dirt path, and then there's a gravel driveway that goes off to the right and, you know, serves the other, you know, buildings on Parcel B. So, and it didn't really make sense to like move just these four paddocks, and they are, they're metal, I mean, they could be moved. I mean, they're not permanent structures that are, you know, put in the ground, but they just didn't make sense to have those four somewhere else, you know? And there's, there's definitely, there'd be, even if they were not there, there's really nothing else you could really put there. It just seemed to make sense that it used the best space.
No, I saw a comment that, you know, set precedents, and, you know, people can do it down the road, but this is internal to share or mutually or the same ownership.
Exactly.
Okay.
Commissioners, just to close the loop on the setback requirement, it's a five-foot setback for the commercial properties when it abuts a residentially zoned property.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The, I know that the one, in the staff report, it discussed the neighbor, there was an original neighbor that had a complaint about odors, but then further in the staff report, it said the owner actually walked person through the property, and actually there's a number of mitigations in the, or conditions to make sure that that's not a problem. So, is the new comment letter from a different neighbor or the same neighbor?
It's from a different neighbor.
Okay.
But I did mention in there that, that the crematory was receiving a permit from the Air Pollution Control District. There's some very strict regulations on it. There, there's been no complaints on it. It's also on Parcel B, so again, it's not adjacent to any residential areas at all.
Okay. Yeah, I did notice that there were, it's quite an extensive amount of work to make sure there were, weren't odor problems, and there were no complaints before. And then I had just a question out of curiosity. The driveways that are in, I guess it's Parcel B, the middle one, are, from the map I'm looking at, I guess they're, that brown color on the exhibit I see, is that gravel or pavement? And I'm just curious, because I know for horses, it's hard on their hooves and to walk when it's all paved, so that's why I was curious. Is that gravel or paved, and is the owner okay with how this is designed? I'm assuming they are, but I just wanted to bring that up.
I don't know which, was it one of the exhibits in the...
Yeah, the one that's up right now, this brown sort of taupe color, I guess. Is that unpaved gravel so horses can get back to those other shelters?
Are you showing, like, are you talking about the, the driveways? Like here, or?
Number 10.
Yeah, exactly.
Number 10.
The brown, it turned green from off of Penrin Road. There's a roundabout, and then brown all the way back.
I, there was a, in my other drawing, I think there's like a little key down there. I'd have to go, is there a key in your packet?
There's not. I think when the applicant comes up, we can ask him that question.
Actually, Commissioners, I believe our EST representative can answer the question.
So, there are different surfacing requirements. Our Condition of Approval 28 identifies, excuse me, that the parking and circulation should be paved except for the locations identified as the alternative surfacing specifically for the horses. And on the site plan, as Anne Marie mentioned, there's different hatching that shows where those different areas are.
Okay.
It looks like, it looks like the pavement's the light gray when you look throughout the legend there, the light gray areas.
Green area to the left.
Yeah, it seems like the green where the roundabout is paved. Is that true? I guess really the question is, is the applicant and owner okay with that, given that my understanding is there is concerns with horses when they're walking on paved areas? So, I just want to make sure that it's, you know, compatible and works for their business model.
Let's ask the applicant when they come up. They'll be speaking next.
The key, the little symbol for the light tan area says gravel access driveway, so we can have him clarify that, but that's what it's looking like it is. It's not paved, but we can have him confirm that. Yeah, because the green is light green, new paved driveways, the one over by the roundabout.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Anne Marie. Anybody else have questions besides?
I have a question for Anne Marie. Are they going to be decommissioning their current small animal clinic when they open this new one? Or is it an addition to their current small animal clinic?
In talking with the applicant, that, that's not the plan, but that this, this new pet hospital might be more of a specialty hospital, or, you know, and he can, when he comes up, he can explain more about what that, those uses might be. But no, it's, they'll still have the other animal hospital that's currently located, it's other facility.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Anne Marie. Any other questions? Bring up the applicant.
Okay. No, I'd like to bring up Dr. Langdon Fielding, who is the applicant and the property owner.
Thank you.
I think all of us are actually going to come up. There's actually a group of seven of us, but we're all veterinarians that, I guess, two of us were in vet school together and started here in Placer County. I guess it's been 20, 22, yeah, 20-plus years ago, and then all of us have become friends and now business partners over the years, so we are excited to be here with you guys and doing this, and yeah, happy to answer any questions. I think you guys mostly know, we are the people who help, you know, CHP when the horse trailers flip over on the freeway, and help the fire evacuations when those involve horses, and help the fire department rescue them out of creeks and stuff, so we are kind of behind the scenes, but love, love being part of the Placer community and are really happy to be doing this expansion, so. I'll let, I'll let everybody introduce themselves. My, I'm, again, one of the, that's, it's been here the longest, but we are all partners in this business together, and...
Thanks. When you guys, just a quick comment. When you guys speak, can you pull the microphone a little closer, because people, it's not coming through clearly when I'm speaking. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Jacobs. I've been at Loomis Basin since I started right after Langdon, so in 2003, and I've been practicing there and part of the ownership for that period of time, and just really enjoy taking care of the community's horses, and we've enjoyed expanding, bringing some small animal services to the Penrin area, and want to just continue to serve you guys.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diana Stolba, another one of the partners. I've been with Loomis for 15 years. I actually am an ambulatory doctor, so I work out of my truck, and I go to Eldorado County and take care of the horses there, and then send the very sick ones to our clinic and our hospital in Loomis, since it's one of the closest referral hospitals. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Mayer. I've been with Loomis Basin since 2011. I manage the after-hours emergency service. I manage the after-hours emergency service at the clinic facilities and ambulatory throughout Placer and other local counties. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, so any questions you guys have, we'd be happy to answer.
Sure, I'm sure we have a plethora.
I have mine.
We will start here to my left.
So in the plan, I'm not going to give comments or anything, but in the plan, there is, it seems like, yes, there's paved and then unpaved, and I'm not an equine expert, but I know a little bit. So is it okay with you and your business model that there is paved driveways? That's not an issue for the horses' mobility and getting them around?
I know not appropriate. I could come up and hug you for asking that question. This was a thing we discussed with staff for probably the better part of two years of where, you know, which should be paved and which not to kind of meet the different requirements, but what what is represented is is acceptable to us. It was kind of a compromise of where the trucks and delivery trailers need to come in and unload needed to be pavement, but where the horses go needed to be the the gravel. So it was, I mean, obviously, yes, we would prefer to just have everything be gravel, but this was the the compromise that we worked out.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And then my question about the small animal clinic that currently exists, and you're going to build another one, are you going to decommission the old one? Are you going to operate both? Is one a specialty clinic?
Yeah, I guess in full disclosure, we, this project has been about five years in the making, so we had obviously intended for this to be the only one, and then kind of after a few years of not being able to do this, we, you know, built the other one. I think, yeah, the plan would be to leave the other one as a as a small animal clinic and then have this be a specialty specialty referral type of center.
Thank you.
Okay, I noticed that there's some residences on the property, and the staff report says you're going to keep those in place. So what are people going to live there, or what's the use of the residence?
Yeah, that's where our, we have a vet students that visit like internationally from different places or from universities around the country, so some of them are for them, and then some of the emergency doctors live there, so that if somebody just shows up in the middle of the night, you know, there's a, there's a doctor that is actually there, and we're not waiting for somebody to drive in. So they're all, you know, essentially staff housing either doctors or aspiring doctors.
Okay, thank you.
No more further questions. Only one comment from me. You guys have read and are agreeable to the conditions of what the county has set for?
Uh, yes, we have.
Okay, thank you. If there's no more questions for you guys, I will now open this up to
I have a quick question for staff.
Okay.
For get the staff back up.
Thank you, you guys can sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm going back in memory, to the south of this parcel C, at one time, there was a high-density residential proposal that was on the docket, and I'm assuming now that, looking at the map, that that has expired and wasn't built, is that correct?
Well, the Penrin Townhomes project is going to be going in south of, I believe it's south.
Is it just south?
It is in construction, or
Yeah.
Site work is already begun on that project.
It's already built?
No, site work, site work is
It's right here.
Is it just
Right in here?
Yeah, and they're moving dirt, or moving now.
Okay, so that's going to be built then. Okay, thank you.
They're putting pipes in. No other questions? I will now open it up to public comment. Thanks, Anne Marie. Do we have anybody from the audience who would like to speak? Anybody online who'd like to speak?
I see none.
I will close public comment. Okay, any additional questions for staff from the commission? Seeing none? Okay. If you have other comments to staff, go ahead before we go to deliberations. None, zero, nothing, okay? I will now ask for commissioners' deliberations on this item. Do we have any? I'll start with you.
Sure, thank you, Anthony. Um, I, the things that I wanted to make sure were that neighbors were consulted, it sounds like they were. The neighbor that sent the public comment, I guess, wasn't here today, but when I read through the staff report and the conditions, it seemed like there were a lot of measures put in place to ensure there's no, like, odors or issues with air quality, so I thought that was good. Sounds like the owner is okay with the compromise paved versus gravel. Um, I personally, just from a, you know, living in the general vicinity, think it's a great project. It fits with the rural community. It it is like perfect combination of advocating for the equine community, which to me is a big part of Placer County, and also the extent in which the owner and the staff went through to preserve the natural resources around the properties. I was like astounded. I don't see that very often in the county, and so I just, I thought it was, I think it's a great project. Again, I think it it really is a great fit for the Penrin area, Horseshoe Bar, and I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Comments? Deliberations?
Yeah, just echoing what Amber said, I mean, with the MAC support, one that resonated with me were the the individuals that were somewhat against it, and then ten days later, they reversed their opposition because they met with the applicant and were probably satisfied with all the conditions. The one point five-foot setback, not a concern to me, being internal to to own properties. And then the special events, I started looking, but obviously, the traffic report did answer those questions, and appreciate the applicant reducing it from five hundred to three fifty when they do have a special event, so, again, in support.
Okay, thank you, everybody. My comments, I was, I toured the facility. It's an amazing facility. I think it fits the the surrounding area perfectly. I was there during the time they were cremating horses, and there was no odor, there was the noise was really reduced. You know, it wasn't bad. You could stand there and have a conversation, you know, in my opinion. So going forward, I would agree that this goes forward, so I'll leave it up to you guys to bring a motion to the table. So thank you.
The recommendations are listed for purposes of today's meeting, since they were already read into the record, you can just identify them as item number one, number two, number three. You don't need to reread all of them.
Do Robin or Rich have anything to say? Because I'm ready to make a motion.
I don't.
Go ahead.
Um, I would move, so I can just say recommend to the board, A, or one, do them separately. Okay, so I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, number one, which has already been read into the record.
Second.
The first and the second, roll call, please.
Beckler?
Yes.
Runtin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Yes.
Dematte?
Yes.
I further move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, number two, which has been read into the record.
Second that.
Beckler?
Yes.
Runtin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Yes.
Dematte?
Yes.
I further motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, number three, which has been read into the record.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Beckler?
Yes.
Runtin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Yes.
Dematte?
Yes.
I further move to motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, number four, which has been read into the record.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Beckler?
Yes.
Runtin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Yes.
Dematte?
Yes.
I further move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, number five, which has been read into the record.
Second.
Roll call.
Beckler?
Yes.
Runtin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Yes.
Dematte?
Yes. The planning commission's recommendation will be forwarded to by the staff, the Board of Supervisors, at an upcoming meeting, as the Board in a final hearing authority on this entitlement request. And this meeting is now adjourned, so thank you.